Six o'clock, we're going to start. Welcome to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting on March 19th, 2024, the first day of spring. Will everyone please stand and join me for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call starting with John Greenan.
John Greenan.
Jackie.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mirosi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
And thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are April 16th, 2024, and May 19th, 2024. We have minutes from the last meeting on February 20th, 2024. If everyone's had a chance to review those, I'll accept a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I abstain. That was not present.
Thank you. I want to announce there is a joint public hearing between the Planning Board and the Town Board for Lidl Warehouse that will be held on April 25th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. First thing on the agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Stack and Store. Advocate is proposing an indoor climate-controlled 82,950-square-foot storage facility in the B1 zone. I'll accept a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Is this all right if these are like this, or would you want to just switch around for everybody here?
I think all of you will want to show them to the public as well. I guess we have a chance to take a look. Why don't you switch them around, and then we'll ask you to switch them back if you need them.
My name is Jack Essler. I'm the Senior Vice President of Development and the Asset Manager for our operating facilities for Stack and Store and the BDC Group. Thank you for the board members for being here tonight and volunteering your time, and as well to all the members of the public for being here as well and considering our project. We appreciate your time. So the agenda for the night, we'll take a second to introduce the team. We'll take a second to do civil engineering, planning, architectural design, and view corridor study, our traffic analysis, socioeconomic analysis, planning board concerns and mitigations, community concerns and mitigations, potential alternative projects in our approved zoning districts, project benefits, and a call to action. So our principal partner, Cosmo DiMarfione, you guys have all had the opportunity to meet him at previous meetings. He's running a few minutes late, but he will be joining us as well. John Lapper is our attorney. He is not with us tonight, but is in full support of the project. We have Chris Palowski, our civil engineer on the project. You guys have had the pleasure of meeting him multiple times. Kevin Solley, the Principal of Solley Engineering, also have the pleasure of having him with us tonight. Derek Gribulis of Kotler Architecture, he's our project architect, who you have all met as well before. And David B. Smith, also, I believe, I think there was an accident on the Taconic, so some of these folks are running a few minutes late, but I believe he'll...
I'm here.
Oh, okay, great. There he is, sorry. Missed David coming in, but David from Planning and Development Advisors, who will be presenting the socioeconomic analysis tonight. So this is a site plan of our proposed development. You're gonna hear a lot about this facility, the engineering, the architecture throughout the night, as the asset manager for these operating facilities, Stack and Store facilities. I did want to just take a second and talk a little bit about some of the community engagement we do. You know, we have Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny, we have car shows, and we really try to be ingrained in the community. Even though, you know, we are a Class A self-storage facility, you see a lot of these Cube Smarts that have 1,000 facilities around the country, right? This is gonna be our fourth. We are operating as a mom-and-pop facility, and we really try to engrain in the community. We support our Little Leagues in these towns. We have, you know, in Milton, we have people that come in every day and have coffee with our building manager. And we really would love the opportunity to bring that sense of community to the town if you guys would grant us that opportunity. So with that, I will pass it along to Chris and Kevin from Solley Engineering.
Good evening, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solley. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York. I also hold a designation as a professional traffic operations engineer, and I'll touch on some of that traffic-related items a little bit later in the presentation. So I know that, I believe I may have been before you guys possibly once as part of an informal discussion. I know my colleague, Mr. Palowski, has been before you for a number of hearings. So what I kind of wanted to focus on tonight was really kind of talk about some of the changes and revisions that have been made to the plan since the last hearing. And one of the things that I always say is that projects evolve over the life of a permitting process. And I'd like to say that, you know, we believe that we've been able to make a number of revisions to this plan to address all of the comments raised by the town engineer, and we've done our best to really address a lot of the comments raised by this, by the Planning Board. And we feel that what's in front of you today really does represent what we think is the, you know, least impactful site development plan that could come, that could be on this property. And we believe that we've really been able to design a facility that won't, will address all those other concerns regarding minimal, you know, no impact from a traffic standpoint, no negligible impacts from an environmental standpoint, and the like. So there have been a number of changes that we've made since our last submission. We submitted our last response to comments through our discussions with the engineer. I just kind of wanted to highlight some of these and make sure that our... There we go. But I'm not sure the board can actually see the screen. You can see this side, hopefully. So one of the things that we've added to the property is we've incorporated a landscape berm along the northerly property line to further elevate the buffers plantings and screenings that were proposed. So we now have a very large, you know, double row of evergreen trees along this northerly side, and it's also been bermed up to further create additional barrier. We're proposing six-to-eight-foot-tall trees there on top of a four-foot berm. So at full maturation, that's gonna be a really thick, extensive vegetative screen to protect and to minimize any potential visual impacts to the north. We've also incorporated a six-foot-high white vinyl fence, solid white vinyl fence along the northerly property line and extending around the rear drive, all the way to the end of the retaining wall, and that'll also provide additional further screening from any of the properties. And again, as you can really see here on the aerial, there's already a very extensive and robust existing treed buffer, which, all of which is being maintained as part of this development. We've incorporated a very small retaining wall along the rear drive aisle in lieu of some of the minor grading that had kind of transitioned outside of the commercial zone. So now all of that activity is limited only to the commercial zone property. We aren't doing anything on the residential side except some plantings. So we've been able to incorporate that to ensure that we did not have any adverse impact to the surrounding residential areas. The stormwater report has been revised. I think this is probably one of the most robust stormwater management projects that we've actually been a part of. What we've done is we've exceeded all the stormwater quality requirements, and from a stormwater detention standpoint, all of the stormwater on the site, it will be collected, routed, treated, and then discharged into both a combination of underground and above-ground stormwater basins. And to the request of the town engineer, we've actually eliminated flow. Any flow from the impervious surface will, it'll all be fully contained and detained onsite, and there will be no discharge of any stormwater off of this property. We've been able to design that and provide sufficient volume to ensure that all that stormwater is maintained, collected, and retained onsite. We've actually done several infiltration tests out there. We actually feel that there will be quite a bit of infiltration associated with this. However, our design was taken, took a very conservative approach, and it did not actually take into account any of that exfiltration. So not only were we able to design this system to really hold the entirety of the stormwater volume, we also have an additional foot of freeboard in both basins for added surplus capacity, and then not taking the exfiltration into account, we feel that this is really the most comprehensive approach we've taken in stormwater management, and it far exceeds the requirements from, you know, New York State DEP and DEC. We've also updated the earthwork memorandum to really update the reflected and the revised grading. Some other information that we've included in our response, we did provide the detail for the proposed monument sign, which is identified on the site plan. And we also provided some sections, some cross-sections. Those are actually on the boards, which are currently facing the public, but they're also up on the screen, and we could spin these around. But what we wanted to do was to provide the board more of a broader view of the relation between the proposed building, the existing street, some of the other berms we provided with the landscaping, and then to see really how the, to show the extensive existing buffer that exists to the residential properties to the east, and how, you know, we really do not believe that this proposed building will really have any visual impacts on any of the surrounding residential uses on the property. And again, you know, we believe that what we've designed, it complies with all of your applicable zoning regulations. We believe we've been able to address all of the comments raised from staff, and we've provided that technical analysis to support that. And we believe that this project really does represent the least impactful potential development plan or program for this property. We're gonna touch on this a little bit later in terms of alternatives, but, and I'll get into that a little bit more when we get to the traffic section, but this type of use really is the least impactful from a trip generation standpoint. We coordinated with the Department of Transportation regarding the access driveways. They've played a big part in our design in response to some of the comments from the town engineer, and we believe that what we have currently before you is truly a very good plan and program for the site. And with that, I think we're gonna go to introduce the architect to talk about the view corridor study that the Commission requested.
Hello? Turn it on. Hello? Is it on? Can you hear me? Okay, thanks, Kevin. Derek Gribulis with Kotler Architecture. At the previous meeting that we attended, for you folks, we were asked to put together some superimposed images of what the project may look like from certain vantage points around the site. So we went to the site, and we took a few pictures, and we created these images, which show what the proposed building would look like in our, in our best, you know, efforts. It's kind of an art and a science to put these things together, because we're putting together angles and trying to create a realistic view. But this is what we came up with, so we can walk you through it right now. All right, so that's just the initial rendering, which we showed to the Architectural Review Board and the Board at the last meeting. And we visited the site, and we took 10 photos from around the neighboring properties, and we took the proposed renderings and superimposed them onto these images. Some of them, you know, were heavily wooded, but we can, you can see what the results are in a second here. So this would be, this would be, this would be looking across Route 82. What I might do is this up here, just bring out. So this is the plan, the key plan, showing where the views are from, just for, because it might be good as a reference. So View 1 is looking directly across Route 82 at the building with the proposed fencing and proposed trees along the road there. So the trees are obviously, you know, they're gonna be variable in size as they mature, but this, this is a good representation of how they might look like when they were initially put in, but these trees are gonna grow through the years. So that's the initial view, looking right across the street. And this is View 2, which is looking more northeast. You can see it on this map right here. So that's pretty much what it's gonna look like in our eyes. You can see it's not too imposing, it's kind of set back from the road. The residential style kind of lends itself to the area. This is View 3, which is looking back southeast along Route 82. You can see on one of the curb cuts and entrance driveways there, along with the building and the proposed, you know, landscaping and whatnot in front of the building. And this is View 4, which is looking from the neighboring property to the north, which you can see in the image that we created here. There's gonna be a few trees that are gonna be remaining, because they're not on the property, the proposed property, they're on the neighboring property, so those will all remain. And then you can also see the six-foot fence in there, which we inserted, which would also feature a four-foot berm underneath it. So it's really gonna be 10-foot above the grade on either side of that berm, along with the proposed evergreen trees, which will be planted on top of that berm, which provides further screening for the building. This is a view from the southern property, which is a commercial property, I believe. So they don't have much for existing trees and landscaping and whatnot that's gonna remain. So you can really see the proposed fencing, I think we're looking over a stormwater area to the front parking lot of the building. And that's View 5. View 6, okay, so View 6 is at 143 Clove Branch Road, which is to the north of the property. Looking southwest, you can see the building in the distance there, which would be kind of somewhat hidden by the grade, and you can also see the new, the new evergreen trees planted for screening purposes that would be covering the building. These are, these are all these were taken last week, so, you know, this is a March view. In the summer, in the springtime, in the fall, it'll be much more filled in. This is View 7? Oh, okay, thank you. View 7, taken from 40 Foster Road. It's looking northwest towards the site. We couldn't quite make out the building in this view, so we put the silhouette in. You think it's gonna be hidden, for the most part, by the grade, so that white box is kind of like where we envisioned the building being, and being in this view. So it's not, there's not much we could have shown in this view anyways. View 8, which is kind of looking directly west from 149 Clove Branch Road. You can see the building there, and we put the proposed evergreens trees in there to further screen the building. And then this is, this is a modest size. These trees will obviously grow. 149 Clove Branch Road, View 9. So this is, we got three from the same property, just happened to work out that way. But there's another view from the same property. You can see the building there, in the center of the, center of the view, right there. Doesn't work on the screen. But get the idea. You can see the building in the center of the view right there. So this is View 10, it's same property, it's just a little bit further back. Again, we didn't think we were gonna be able to make out the building in this view, so we just put the silhouette in, so you could see generally where it was gonna, gonna be So that's, so those are the 10 views we put together based on the images and the site visits that we, that we, that we created. So I have hard copies of them, too, if anybody wants to take a closer look. So I think that's it for now until I have some questions, so thank you.
Thank you. So again, we wanted to, we had provided a trip generation summary as part of our initial report, and as I stated before, we've gone through a review, a preliminary review process with New York State DOT regarding our proposed development, our access, access points, our circulation, our one-way circulation with an entrance and an exit. From a traffic standpoint, I just kind of wanted to go through, I think it may have been touched on in previous meetings, but from a trip generation standpoint, the proposed use is really a very negligible trip generator. And from a traffic study standpoint, what we typically do is we want to understand, you know, the peak hour, peak hour operations of the corridor, so we look at an AM peak hour during that morning, rush hour commute, an afternoon peak hour, and then a Saturday peak hour. And the general rule of thumb is if you're putting 100 vehicles at an intersection, it warrants a more, a fully detailed traffic assessment. So what we have on the screen is essentially a trip generation comparison table. The first scenario is what's being proposed, the proposed self-storage use. So as you can see, during that AM peak hour, this facility would be estimated to generate a total of seven trips, four entering, three exiting. During the afternoon peak hour, a total of 12 trips, six entering, seven exiting. Again, that's for a full, that peak hour. So that, that's a peak hour between, you know, 7:00 and 9:00, or a peak hour between 4:00 and 6:00, whatever the ambient street traffic is. And then on a Saturday peak hour, it would estimate to only generate 14 trips. So again, that's like between 10:00 and 2:00, when the busiest road congestion happens on, you know, in that midday peak period. This facility would only generate a total of nine trips entering and five trips leaving. So when you really look at that over a 60-minute period, it's really negligible from a traffic generation standpoint. But I also wanted to share and provide a comparison of some of the other uses that are permitted, as of right, under the zoning regs, and could be, could be proposed on the same property. So we looked at a couple options. We looked at a medical dental office building, and we kept it modest, only 20,000 square feet. That would generate a total of 62 trips during that AM peak hour, 79 trips during that afternoon peak hour, and 60 trips during a Saturday peak hour. If we were to look at two fast-food restaurants with drive-through windows, again, it's a permitted use in the zone, those would generate 205 trips in the morning, 152 trips in the afternoon, and 254 trips on a Saturday. And then we looked at Scenario 4, a gasoline service station, which, which is a permitted use in the zone. It could be applied for on this property. And we actually kept it pretty modest, only 10 fueling, fueling positions. That would generate 82 trips in the morning, 111 trips in the afternoon, and 102 trips on a Saturday mid, on a Saturday peak. So what we're proposing is a, is a, is a fraction of all of those other trip generation, potential trip generators that could be proposed on this property and are fully compliant with the zoning regulations. And then to also compare just the daily trip generation, so this is, you know, over a 24-hour period, how many total vehicles would be generated by this facility. During a weekday, we'd estimate 120 for the self-storage user, and 146 on a Saturday. And then when you start to look at some of these other uses, again, which are permitted in the zone, could certainly be proposed on these properties, medical dental office, 720 trips on a weekday, and 276 on a Saturday. That two drive-through use, again, this is something that's permitted, that would be 2,150 vehicles during a weekday and 2,834 vehicles on a Saturday. And then even a gas station, 1,376 trips on a weekday and 1,457 on a Saturday. So from a, you know, when, and they're gonna, we're gonna discuss it a little bit more detail, but from an alternative standpoint, when you look at the, the permitted uses within the zone that could be applied to this property, this proposed use really is the least impactful that could be considered. And that's another reason why we think that this really is a good use of the property, it's an appropriate use of the property, and it could be far less impactful than any of the other myriad of uses which could be proposed and could comply with zoning that could, that could be located here. So, you know, we have some, we had some conclusions in our trip down assessment, I'll just, you know, repeat them again for the record. You know, the minor increase in traffic volumes associated with the proposed development is within the daily fluctuation of traffic volumes on the roadway network. Anticipated trips generated by the proposed redevelopment can be accommodated by the surrounding roadway network without adverse impact to the, to the operating conditions of the roadway network. And again, the approved land use includes significant traffic generators such as drive-throughs, gas stations, retail facilities, office, and all of those would generate multiples of traffic more than what we're proposing. So again, we do feel that what's, what's before this Commission this evening is the most appropriate for the property with the least impacts to the area roadway network and then the surrounding, the surrounding communities. And with that, I think we're gonna introduce our... Yep, David Smith. And we're here at the end to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is David Smith. I'm a principal with Planning and Development Advisors, we're a land use planning and real estate development consulting firm. I'm the principal of the firm. I know I don't look it, but I've been practicing planning for over 35 years, and I have to say this is my first time here in East Fishkill, so I can cross that one off my, my bucket list, and it's a pleasure to be here before you. Mr. Marfione and I have been, we have worked together on a number of projects in the past. He's asked that I prepare a fairly basic socioeconomic real estate tax analysis with respect to the proposal that you're considering right now. To do that, we looked at, we used a desktop survey methodology, looking at the existing tax role for an existing facility within the Town of East Fishkill. That is the Guardian self-storage facility, it was constructed in 2002. And we looked at the, the assessment both for the land and for the building, square footage, that's great, thank you, as part of that methodology, to arrive at an assessed value per square foot. And then that was then translated into a, an assessed value that could be applied to this particular application on a square foot and on a, on a per-acre basis. The information that I'm presenting is provided as part of a March 10th, 2024 memo directed to your board, so you should have that as part of the record. In addition to the existing facility, the Guardian facility, which is a, a different product than what is being considered right now, the Guardian facility is basically an open-air facility where you drive up and you actually walk up to your individual unit as opposed to what's being proposed now, which is a fully enclosed facility, climate-controlled, and has a whole series of security measures that are involved as part of accessing that facility. In addition to the existing facility, the Guardian facility, which is a, a different product than what is being considered right now, the Guardian facility is basically an open-air facility where you drive up and you actually walk up to your individual unit as opposed to what's being proposed now, which is a fully enclosed facility, climate-controlled, and has a whole series of security measures that are involved as part of accessing that facility. In addition to the existing facility, the Guardian facility, it was suggested that we look at something that may be more comparable to what's being proposed, and though you didn't have, the Town of East Fishkill didn't have an exact or a close comparable, there was one in the neighboring Town of Fishkill, which we used, that's the Life Storage Facility located at 35 Merritt Boulevard. That facility, thank you, is comparable in size, approximately 60,000 square feet on 3.1 acres. And we did this, and when we compared the, the two assessments, as you can imagine, there is a, a higher value for the newer facility, the enclosed facility. And so there's a range of a square foot, assessed value per square foot, up between $32 and $54 per square foot. And again, we're trying to provide a range here to show that, that what's currently being considered, there's some reasonable aspect as to what you, what the town could expect from the way of, of real estate tax revenue. So using the assessed value methodology, we were able to project an assessed value of somewhere between almost $3 million and $4.5 million. And that translates into a projected tax revenue of $77,000 to approximately $120,000 annually, per year. That's to all... annually, per year. That's to all taxing jurisdictions. So that provides at least some range. And there's, the projected increase in overall tax revenue is between $65,000 and $109,000. Again, so I think there's a significant increase in tax revenue with respect to this particular project. Thank you. And I think, you know, and I've had the opportunity to, to work in a number of communities which have considered self-storage facilities. The town of Somers, in which I'm the town planner, we just approved a 44,000 square-foot self-storage facility. And so we had to evaluate the potential impacts of that facility on the community, in addition to evaluating similar facilities in the village of Elmsford and the village of Ardsley. And I think that the, our conclusion is that based on our experience, these types of facilities have very little impact on community services. And I think as one of the results, I mean, there's a windfall, certainly there's a windfall for the school district. And we projected that anywhere between 60 to $93,000 in increased tax revenue with no schoolchildren entering the, the school district. So we wanted to make sure that that was part of the record for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cosmo Marfione. For the record, I'm the president of the BDC Group. And so what I want to do in the next couple of minutes is just go over the, some of the plan, just like a summary of planning board concerns and how we try to mitigate those concerns. So, and then we'll go through, you know, some of the concerns from the neighbors and, and see how we, you know, just how we responded to the, to those concerns. So the first, the first concern was design. So we, you know, at first, we thought we could do three stories, which was the, the more residential design that we normally have, like the photo that you see there on the top. Then we, then, then it was two stories that we could, that we could build. And, and then we proposed the one at the bottom, you know, boxy look, looking like that. And, but then our architect Derek did a great job trying to get the same look with only two stories. So that, that took a lot of time and effort to do that. We've, we've taken into consideration trying to enclose our site as much as possible from the back and the sides with berms. Like Kevin said at the, at the very beginning, on the northern side, we created this berm, this vinyl fence, some landscape screening all around. We, we, you know, I'm a professional engineer, and, you know, I've been doing this for 20 years. And this stormwater design, I've, I've never had to build something like this before. But if, if this is what it takes, then this is what it takes. We accommodated the WB62 truck turning capacity around the building and into the, into the site, zero light emitting, emissions on neighbors' properties. We, we redesigned the back to include a dedicated loading and unloading area. We put a ton of split-rail stormwater fencing, which looks very nice actually, around the ponds. And we were complying with the New York State DC Indiana Baton blending turtles. We did the study, I think this study was submitted, right? There was no impact. We've reduced the building signage and lighting as requested by the board. We focused a lot on the noise and sediment control, the plan for during construction, like anti-tracking pads for trucks coming and going, vehicle hose downs. We'll have a sprinkler system throughout the site for dust mitigation, dust suppression, construction fence and sill fence, obviously, controlled trucking hours. We're going to try to get the trucking there after the peak hours so that it doesn't impact traffic to the community during the normal peak hour traffic times. We, we have controlled, you know, daily mechanical sweeping of the roads. We'll have stockpile protection, of course, sediment traps, and, you know, we'll make sure that one of our engineers is there daily to do a daily inspection during the earth-moving operations. Community concerns. Okay. So I'm going to try to face the community here so that you guys can hear me. So we received two letters from the community. This is an attempt to address both letters that we received. And there's a combination of, of things that were, you know, answers for those, for those comments. One of the comments was their demand for storage. We went over this, I believe, last meeting. We do have a third-party mark, a third-party market study, feasibility study, which says there's, there's plenty of demand for the storage. Building size and location, you know, we are within zoning regulation. We're not seeking any zoning variances. We, we, we have designed the building, as you can see. It looks quite lovely from the road. It, it doesn't look like it's very impactful to the, to the, to the area. Our side yard setbacks exceed what we need to be for regulations. We have natural screening, and so on and so forth. Light pollution, we, we did spec all our lights as a dark sky compliant lighting, which essentially means that it, you know, there's no, what's bug saying for it? Brightness, uplight, and glare. So a 1.0, which is very, very, very good rating for, for lighting. We have, we really not done anything to eliminate, to, to cause elimination beyond, you know, the perimeter of, of the building. We're not a 24-hour facility, right? So we're not a 24-hour facility. We, we have staff between 9:00 and 5:30, at 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. Our existing clients may access the building between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. And of course, the facility is not operating 24 hours a day. So that's very important that you understand that, because that was a big comment on both letters. Protection of drinking water, you know, stormwater quality standards need exceed New York State DC requirements. We are, we, we don't have a well here, so we're not drilling for a well. We're going to connect to the, to the town's public water system. We have minimal wastewater effluent. I mean, it's designed for 75 gallons per day, but we actually monitored our other three sites, and it's less than 30 gallons per day. A minimal environmental impact compared to all the permitted uses as, as, you know, Kevin alluded a little bit on the traffic, and we'll talk a little bit more later. The security, you know, we have 24-hour CCTV. We have access control. We have a 24-hour call center. We have property managers that are trained and, and do screen our customers. We have, and there was a request for motion sensors around the building, motion, motion lights, I'm assuming. So we, we're going to, you know, we normally put those. So our, our wall packs will have sensors, so if somebody's there, the light will go off, will go on. Noise and traffic control, you know, we talked about in Ozium how little impact this facility will have on traffic. And, you know, HVAC equipment will adhere to any state and local requirements as, as, as far as noise concerns. Another, another big concern was the natural barrier to residential lots. You know, the R1 lot will remain as a buffer and undeveloped. The, the building is actually set back 234 feet from the rear lot, rear line. So pretty far away from the rear homes. We talked about the six-foot vinyl fence. We talked about the berm, the eight-to-10-foot evergreens that will be installed there. No repurposing of building in the future. Okay. So our, our building is built so that there's building, there's bearing walls every 10 feet. So it'll be pretty tough to take any of those out, because the building will collapse. So this is staying a self-storage, you know, at least until I retire, which will be when I'm 95. So you guys will be okay with that. You know, the self-storage, you know, we've asked, we talked, Dave and I talked about, about it, you know, as a planner. It doesn't really affect like the property values. You know, it doesn't have a negative impact, or it doesn't have a positive impact. It's kind of, it, it, you know, I could, I could say, well, it has a positive impact because the building looks beautiful. But it, it really, there's no impact on the values of the building, of your, of your homes around there. The only impact is we're going to give you some better place to store your materials and a nice-looking building that, that you could drive by.
Before we move on to alternative projects, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to thank the public. In the last week and two, week or two, I had the pleasure of going into a few homes and sitting at, at dinner tables with folks, going up on porches to take pictures from our concern, you know, of budding neighbors. And, and it was a pleasure to interact with everybody and have a, an open-candid discussion. So thank you very much for, for considering the project and having an open discussion with us. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, so alternative projects that we could, we looked at the zoning and some of the things that, some of the potential projects we could build on this site, a communication tower, a commercial kennel, drive-through retail, gas station, public utility structures, fast food, medical center, mortuary. In the R1 district, nursing home, cemetery, daycare, hospital, and mulch preparation, like a landscape, like, you know, where you, you grind up the trees and you, and you mix it and you get mulch, right? Another commercial communication tower, a motel, and utility substation. And, you know, like we said before, based on the zoning, we have to be 40 feet from the front, 10 feet on either side, and 20 feet in the rear. And our proposed is far exceeds that. So we are trying to stay within, well within what is required by zoning. And as Kevin alluded before, you know, all these alternative uses do have a huge impact on traffic. So finally, some project benefits. Like we said before, no adverse impact on the, on environment, no impact on the school system, obviously, minimal traffic and noise impact compared to all the permitted uses. The tax generator for the town would be very little impact to town services. Job creation, we do, you know, we're going to have two to three folks that we're going to hire to manage the facility. Business-to-business referral marketing program that, you know, Jack, Jack is our asset manager.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that.
You can talk a little bit about that. Go ahead, Jack.
We do a lot of, just doing cross-promotions of the Chamber of Commerce, sending customers through to moving companies for, you know, lawn care and, and doing snowplow removal. All of that, we hire within the town that we have our building. So for job creation, it does go further than just our, our couple employees. And, and even the, the property management company that, that I have the pleasure of managing, they do hire within the town as well. So those employees, they, they won't be coming from outside. They'll be coming from the community, creating a few jobs. And there'll be, you know, a substantial amount of contractors that will be able to employ locally as well during the, the construction process, which, you know, as we know, can take a year.
Yeah, about a year.
Talk more about that. But, but yeah, we have, we have an extensive referral program, and we see a lot of economic strength in for our surrounding businesses. And of course, we benefit from that as well. So, and I spoke a bit earlier about our community engagement. Right now, we sponsor all youth sports teams in our local communities.
Toys for Tots.
Yeah, we do Toys for Tots. We have Santa Claus and the Easter Bunny, Fun Fair Days for the children with big bounce houses. And we've done pet adoption. I mean, pretty much you name it, whenever we can get the community involved, we, we try to do it. And, and we, and I, you know, I-
We've been successful at it.
We've been very successful. We really, we really like to get ingrained. And, and I, and I said earlier, and this wasn't exaggeration, we have folks that come in for morning coffee. We, we have community, the, the Chamber of Commerce, we hold breakfast in Patterson at our facility. These are things that we'd love to bring to the community if we had the opportunity. And, yeah.
Good. Okay. So tonight, I mean, all in all, the call to action is really to conclude the public hearing and, you know, if the board is ready to, to review the SECR documentation for, okay? And we're open for questions. Questions, more detail, we have other drawings that we could pull up as well.
Okay. Thank you for a very comprehensive presentation. I'll start by opening it up to the board members. Are there any planning board members who have questions or comments? If not, I'll move to the professionals. Any questions or comments from our professionals?
Mr. Chair, I think maybe there are two points from the most recent resident letter if the applicant's team could address before the public gets a chance to go up there. Maybe a little more depth about the trees and other landscaping that'll be buffering the property. And also, any sort of dust control measures that you have? Because I know some residents were concerned about their house being covered in dust during construction.
I mean, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's, let's go back. Let's go back. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Do you want to, you want to, you want to go to a landscape plan?
Yeah, I'd go to the rendering, because that does capture our proposed plantings. And actually, I realized I misspoke before. I think before I mentioned that the, keep going back. Couple more. Here we go. I believe I mentioned the proposed trees that we're proposing along the northern and along the rear. I think I said six to, six to eight-foot tall. They're actually eight to 10 feet tall at time of planting. So we actually were able to increase those evergreen sizes pretty considerably to make sure that they do, even at time of planting, they'll provide a really good vegetative buffer. And then as the years go on and those plants continue to grow, it's just going to become more and more robust. So we added 32 evergreen trees, screen trees along the northern and eastern borders. We have 13 overstory trees in front, along the front and along the sides. And we believe, again, those will really be pretty robust. And I'll tell you in a minute, let me just go to my landscape plan, and I'll actually tell you the species we're proposing to plant so that they can, you know, fully understand the, the extent of the anticipated screening. So we chose all evergreen varieties. And we actually had a mix, because we didn't want to just limit it to just one type to make sure that there was some variety there. We have some eastern hemlock, and we also have some white spruce around those perimeters to really give us a really good, robust, evergreen screen through there.
So ideally, the trees won't, so they'll, they'll keep their vegetation throughout the whole area. And I just wanted to, to also say, we, we've taken these photos.
Sure. It might take a second. It was.
So we, we've taken the photos of, you know, like, like, like last week, right? So we still, and, and you could see that this, you barely could see the building from, you know, yes, I mean, from, from the back, right, right? So this is 143 Claude Branch Road. I mean, this is the worst-case scenario, right? Because there's no leaves on the trees, and we, we took it literally in the, in, in winter time. So we come back and, you know, two weeks, two months from now, it's a total, you, you, you're not going to be able to see the, the building whatsoever, right? And, and also, we, we, those trees that you see far away by the building, I mean, those are going to get bigger and bigger. And once those, you can see that the top of the trees exceed the top of the building. Once those fill in, I mean, you're not going to see the building at all, right? So I think, I know, we did a, an incredible job trying to screen the northern and eastern boundary line, and also by staying far away from those, from our property line. So I think that's- So I think that's, that would be, you know, what we've done to address those concerns. And then, what was the-
Yeah, if I may speak to the neighbor letter, I think there was a concern of pressure washing houses is what you were referring to. And of course, there's a certain liability that comes along with taking a pressure washer to residential homes that we don't own and aren't our property. So we can't commit to that, but we'd be happy to take, you know, like all the measures that we already spoke about, and you know, if we needed to produce a pressure washer for use of those residential neighbors on their own property, we'd be happy to do that. But we aren't going to be pressure washing on our own.
And I think something else that's identified in both the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan and our Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan, the site will also be equipped with a water truck during construction to provide that additional dust suppression, so this doesn't become, you know, something that is kicking up a lot of dust. That could very, very easily be managed during the construction process. We provided those, we provided for those provisions in the documents that are before you. So those are all conditions that can, you know, the content of the plans are essentially what this board is considering. So, you know, we believe we built in those protection measures to ensure that during construction, it doesn't have that impact that the residents are fearful of.
And for the most part, around the building, you know, what we try to do is go in, there's going to be some mass excavation that's going to happen, which will happen, you know, a month or so, month or two. And then what happens is we, we, we'll get the foundation in. Once the foundation goes in and the slab goes in, we've, you know, I can't commit that it will be done for this project, but I could commit that the, around the building will have, it'll be stable, right? Because we're going to bring in lifts, you know, the lifts, mechanical lifts, lots of materials, right? So we don't want, we don't want mud all around. So like on the Patterson project, it worked out so nicely that we've, we did the foundation, we actually put the binder coat down before we even started erecting the building, right? But if the binder coat is not down, we'll put item four down so that, you know, we're not going to create a lot of dust.
Other questions or comments? Christian, did you have anything with three yards to stormwater?
They have submitted, they just, unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to review the submission. It came in a little bit late, but we are going to go through that and just make sure everything is, has been addressed. You know, they have taken steps to make sure, you know, that it's pretty much overdesigned, and that's due to the fact that the DOT highway has no drainage at all. But we are going to be going through and checking the materials submitted last week.
Great, thank you. So I think the applicant did allude to a letter, a second letter that was sent by residents. I'm not going to read through the entire letter, because I think it'll be repetitive. As far as I could tell, I think you've addressed all of the issues that were raised in that letter. It's a letter dated March 12th, 2024. The parties to the letter include Joe, Diano, Max Garfinkel, Franco Matica, Sandra Sanchez, and Tim Tarby. And this will be made a part of the permanent record for the project. Additionally, we have another note that was sent to us by Michael Amorisono, and I think his comments too were responded to during your presentation. If any member of the public would like to speak now, I'd like to open it up to the public. And if by chance I failed to see anything in the letter that wasn't addressed, please bring it up during your comments. I'll ask everybody to just, when they come up, please sign in at the podium and plan to only speak once this evening, and a three to five-minute thing limitation would be appreciated. So is there anyone here from the public to speak or against the project? Anyone at all? Okay, so I guess there's nothing else? Are there any further comments? Yes.
I just had a couple of questions. As far as the onsite circulation, I know we spoke about the WB62 getting around the rear of the building. Will a ladder truck, no, defer, will that get around the front of the building, a ladder truck?
Yes, it will. And I believe we provided truck turning figures, which documents that emergency vehicles-
And you've seen those, you're good with that? Okay, all right. What is your, like, maximum cut in the rear of the building? Depth?
So, excuse me, for the record, Chris Polowski, the rear grade where the trees are and the rear drive is existing is about 300, and our first floor elevation is 288, so you're talking about a 12-foot cut. Again, we tried to build that building into the hill, so you're, it's actually not seeing 12 feet of the building.
Have you dug test pits?
We have done substantial test pits in the front, along the sides, and the rear of the facility.
So you can go down 12 feet, no rock?
We should not have a problem.
So you won't be doing any hammering?
Again, you know, ground conditions are very, very un-boring as well, but if we do hit rock, again, it's unpredictable, but we will address it.
Did you dig test pits like at the corner of each building?
We did a geotech report, and boring is within the limits of the building, and we aren't anticipating hitting any rock as part of the excavation.
The AC units are located where?
AC units are located along the northern side of the building, as shown right here.
Okay, and is there any kind of screen or anything, being that we got a residence on the north side, is there anything? Besides just a property fence?
There's a fence that surrounds the units themselves.
The units themselves, there is a fence?
Correct. And then additionally, we have the berm and the screen and the white vinyl fence.
And the fence at the end, so you got a couple of things there.
Potentially four measures there.
Okay. And finished floor elevation versus Route 82 elevation, can you just?
Route 82 is just shy of two, elevation 282.
Right.
Depending on where you are in the road, sometimes it's a little bit above. So I'll just say 282. The first floor elevation is 288. So we're six feet higher in the-
Just six feet, okay. So when you look at that, I don't know if you're able to get six feet out of that or not, but almost looks kind of level, that illustration, but it's actually six feet higher.
Yeah, it is over 108 feet.
Yeah, not dramatic, but it might be just a little bit higher than it's represented there. Okay. And is there actually a berm along 82 at that pond, or is it flush the way it's represented?
There should, there should be a slight berm there.
Okay.
It's approximately like two or three feet higher.
We actually bring up the grade on the, adjacent to the pond, up to 287. So the, a landscape there, and you can see where all those trees are shown adjacent to Route 82, those are actually elevated approximately five feet. The base of that is approximately five feet above the elevation of the road.
All right, so like when I look at this, that really doesn't represent, because that looks like flush to me.
Yeah, we shouldn't be able to see the pond.
Shouldn't be able to see the pond.
I would agree with that. I think, and I think probably the architectural representation is a little bit different. I think it's probably best seen-
Yeah, just to-
-on the section, which shows, here's Route 82, here's the berm for the basin itself.
Okay.
So it's elevated, and then there's trees planted above this, and then the basin comes down and it comes back for the finish.
So the tree that's there isn't really there, it's actually on top of the berm?
No, I think it's slightly on the slope.
Okay. But you said it's like the base of the tree is about five feet above 82, depending on where 82 you-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, those renderings, as Derek alluded to, they're a touch of art and science, right? So we tried to also take the most conservative approach.
I just don't want anybody walking away with, like, that's exactly what it's going to look like.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, typically, the DEC sort of frowns upon putting trees in a berm that's to provide embankment, just in case if the, if a high wind comes and blows the tree over, it doesn't compromise the integrity of the berm.
The pond berm.
Yeah, I think the landscape plan accurately depicts kind of where those are, more in relation to the, closer to the elevation of the road versus than the top of the berm. Because you do want to make sure that berm creates that impervious barrier for the stormwater management aspects of it.
Okay. And I guess just one last thing. When you did your assessment evaluation, if I did my math right, you're saying about $35 a square foot?
For the Guardian, it was approximately $32 a square foot. Yeah.
And that's what you used in this example, right? More in line with Guardian?
We used the range, so we used the Guardian, which is kind of at the low end. And then we looked at a facility that was fully enclosed, and that came out a bit higher.
Like 76, if my math's right.
Yeah, closer to $54.
That's really what this represents, not the Guardian though, right?
Correct, right.
So your numbers are, I think, under-
We're conservative, right? And I think that's what we mentioned in our memo, is that we tried to have a-
I can't see you can build this for $35 a square foot. I don't think you guys are thinking you're going to build it for 35 a square. Not today.
No, but it's what it's assessed at, not necessarily what it's built, you know, the cost to build. Okay? Anything else? Very good, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from members of the public, our professionals, or our board members? Then if there's no objection, I think we can close the public hearing.
It's up to the board.
I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that closes the public hearing. So I think we just got a little bit of, to finish up with stormwater review, because some of the information came in a little bit late. And we'll review all of the other comments that you made this evening, and we will see you at the next meeting.
Sure. At the next meeting, is it possible to have, to review the, you know, the SECR just for appropriateness and making, before, we submitted a short form, right?
They declared the-
No, I know that, I know that. We, I want to get ready for voting on SECR. What needs, what needs to happen for that to get ready?
I think we just need to finish our stormwater review, because that was one of the major things that we were studying as far as SECR is concerned. So once the engineers has finished the stormwater review, we've done the visual analysis today, the board, I think will be ready to review the SECR at the next meeting.
Okay, in anticipation that the review is, is going to be okay, is there anything else we need to submit in order for the board to, you know, to comment on the SECR, to vote on the deck, you know, on the SECR, whether positive, you know, or negative deck on the-
Well, I think Christian's still reviewing everything that was submitted, I think, last week, so I'm sure he'll follow up with your team if there's anything else needed in between now and then.
I just don't know what, at the next meeting, what are we, we're going to try to accomplish at the next meeting? Other, you know, are we going to say, you know, what would you, what would you like for us to prepare for the next meeting? That's-
Well, whatever responses that Christian would have.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, what about stormwater maintenance agreement?
I think you're a little tweaks to the signing.
That's fine after.
That's fine.
A few little tweaks.
So at this point, I'm not aware of anything in particular. I think it is responding to our professionals' letters, and that should cover it. Lori?
There was a gentleman in the audience that had his hand.
He had his hand.
Oh, yes, sir.
If I may speak in behalf of some of the, some of the residents that were not, were unable to join tonight because of the time. So the question is, would it be appropriate to have the rest of the residents send in some of their concerns and things that we hope the board would consider?
I think we normally keep-
So the board can, the board can keep open, let's say, a 20-day written comment period. So any of, any of the residents can submit something in that 20-day window, that'll be considered by the board.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And good evening.
When do you think you'll have your subscription?
I have that in about a week.
Uh huh. Did you think of anything on the Board of Health Phillips? Yeah, I got to look through that.
So the next item on the agenda is Lidl Warehouse. A applicant is applying for an 874,139 square foot warehouse on 71.33 acres of undeveloped land within the I Park campus.
For Phillips Road relocation.
Well, that's not necessarily true, so. Just give me whatever, give me everything you got.
Do you know who we hate only as well as the project?
Good evening. Good evening. Steve Wilson with Bowler on behalf of the applicant, Lidl. Since the last we saw you, I think was in January, we have been busy. Since that time, we've made a quite sizable submission that, I think if you printed it all out, it'd be about two, a couple thousand pages. Hopefully, you didn't print it all out and read it all yet, but we made a submission back in February, which included, most importantly, we think, a full drawing set, which was about 33 pages, a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and various environmental documents that support our application. Also, in that time, we have been active with some of the other boards in town, as you already mentioned. We were at the town board just last week to kick off that process with the special economic development permit. And we attended, we have attended two ARC meetings in February and in March, and we're going to be back in front of them in April. We kind of feel we're pretty close to getting where we're set with the elevation to the building. We've added some color, some what we call racing striping to the building, some vertical striping to the building to kind of break up that massing. Even the version we submitted with this, this plan set is not up to date. It's going to have a little bit more color to it, and the field of some of the buildings will be broken up a little bit more. So these are, it's a still work in progress with the ARC. But after two meetings and a third one, I think we're just about there. We also met with the Fire Advisory Board back in February, got some good feedback from them, a good discussion. I think we just received some recent comments from them as well, which we didn't see any problem addressing those. That conversation will be ongoing as we go through the process. Some of the external agency discussions that have been mentioned, we're, we received comments from the Corps of Engineers on our wetland application, and we're working on addressing those comments. We're waiting on DEC to issue the same comments on our wetland application. They said that probably as soon as this week, we would have those. And we are currently working, kind of a key issue for us is, there is a, kind of right about where my cursor is, there's, and it's in the environmental documents we submitted, there's leftover from the recra and kind of the environmental history of the site that's referred to as a quote-unquote landfill. It's probably about an acre in footprint. Reportedly, all the material that was once there that made it classified as a landfill has since been removed years ago, and the site simply remains having that classification as a landfill. So we have a meeting with DEC, hopefully coming up very shortly, we've been trying to get scheduled to discuss that, and see if there's ability to kind of remove that distinction or that labeling as a landfill, since it no longer has those traits. It's been cleaned up. So that is an ongoing discussion. And Chippewa, Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, as we last talked to you, they wanted a Phase 1A, 1B done on the property, which we have done, and they signed off on. Now, unfortunately, and I guess it's, we showed up at the wrong time, they feel the park and the building is now, buildings are in excess of 50 years of age. And if you know what that means, that means you're potentially historically significant. So they, they are requesting us to do a photo inventory of the park, to confirm that none of the buildings on the property are historically significant. Believe me, we have tried to push back on this, as it's really not our problem, so to speak. But they are not going to sign off on our project until we get through this photographic inventory of the property and submit that information to them. So that is also ongoing. So that is also ongoing. And I think one of the bigger documents, and it came up in some of the comments we just received, I know we've got three or four comment letters just today. Generally, I didn't see any big problems addressing those, although I'm just still digesting them. So we'll work on responding to those, including revising our traffic study, which we'll have revised for our next submission as well. So the submission to date hasn't changed the project programmatically, really. You know, building size, height, parking, layout, circulation, all that kind of stuff is the big picture items that remain the same. I think the information we have provided and will continue to provide is really getting the weeds of the design, you know, issues related to the infrastructure, the stormwater management system, all the kind of the details that go into the project. So we know we still have a lot of work to do, I think, in addressing this next round of comments, but our plan is hopefully to get a submission in by the end of the month, so we'll be back in front of you in April. And is the co-applicant also making progress? I think you need to have I Park get involved with regards to moving the water tower. That's right. Yep. And our SECRE document, our FEAF, covers both projects, so, you know, square footages and disturbance areas are all calculated based on the two projects.
Now, with the landfill designation, has there been, like, environmental phasing done on it, like a phase?
Supposedly, there has been, and, like I said, it's been cleaned up. It's just kind of a remnant of the site that it still has that designation.
But even though that it still may have the designation and that environmental study has been done at some point in time, it would have to be current. It'd have to be done in the last, I would say, year, right?
What would have to be done in the last year?
Like a Phase 1 environmental of the property?
Well, we have a-- we have a Phase 1 that was actually submitted in our last package. But it seems the actual cleanup of this area that's designated as a landfill occurred some years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, are there test wells there or anything there to--
I don't think there's any test wells in that particular footprint. There are test wells on the property, but I don't think they're in the footprint of the landfill itself around it.
I would think that would be something that'd have to be looked at, but--
Oh, yeah, that's a concern of ours, yeah. We don't want something called-- Like I said, it's reportedly been cleaned up and there's nothing there. It just retains that designation. Other questions or comments by board members? Our professionals, any questions or comments?
I think the one thing with regard to traffic, I know we talked in the past about routing the truck traffic at least out to I Park Boulevard, so that's the intent, your curbing and whatnot will route--
That's right. We control the fleet essentially, so we will obviously definitely, our front door will be Shenandoah Road, yeah, from I Park Boulevard.
I Park Boulevard, okay.
Absolutely.
I think at the last meeting, you guys were referred to the ARC, and you've met with the ARC?
Twice, yes.
Where are we with that review?
Yeah, we've got a lot of feedback then, and we revised the building and are continuing to revise it with some both vertical and horizontal striping to the building to break up the massing. And we're back in front of them for the April meeting with revised elevations.
Okay. I guess they'll bring the revisions to our public hearing, but not to the Town Board public hearing, so they'll have to be done with the ARC, whatever it is that they're agreed to for the public hearing, because our public hearing is really the architectural public hearing. So I'm looking at you to just choose that in a sense.
So you'll have-- will you have architectures for the April 25 hearing?
We will, yeah. This will be revised by the April 25 meeting.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Okay. So then just make sure you bring--
The most current ones.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And then just by way of process, I just want to remind everyone that the Town Board will be-- will have a joint public hearing with the Town Board. They're going to be secretly lead agent, and also they are reviewing the application for an economic redevelopment special permit. We can't continue our review until once they've issued that permit, so we'll then probably-- They'll probably close their-- the Town Board public hearing, assuming all goes well, and then they would refer back to the planning board for continuation of the site plan public hearing, similar to how we did it with Amazon, it's the same special permit.
Okay, got it.
I'm sorry, did they-- I wasn't clear when I was in front of them. Did they actually solicit for lead agency status? Has that been undertaken?
I think they may have--
They weren't clear, and I--
That's something we'll confirm.
Okay, thank you.
I'll confirm that for you.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, so I know we talked about statistics for I Park Boulevard.
That's right, statistics from other-- that's right.
And this is three shifts a day?
Actually, four, but they overlap.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could look into what time those shift changes are, only because to some degree you're sharing a road with a school. Existing building, you've had to make some concession tests at what time those shift changes were, so that it's not interfering with school drop-offs and pickup for you. I know with the truck traffic, you can restrict I Park Boulevard, but you deem that you're connected to 52 on the other end, trying to keep as much of that traffic on I Park Boulevard as opposed to 52 as possible.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, generally, shifts are going to lay out like this. There'd be like a 5 to 3 p.m. shift, that would probably be the biggest, but then there's kind of an overlapping 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., and then there's a 12 to 10. By that point, there's about 45 people on the property, and then overnight, there's only about 30.
Okay.
Yeah. But I can provide that summary along with the statistics you wanted.
Yeah, okay.
And a response to your other comments we just received.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, if there's nothing further, thank you very much. We'll see you hopefully in a month. Well, definitely, we'll see you in April, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda is JFE Associates. And at our last meeting, I think Mr. Gilbert was representing the applicant, and we'd recommended a couple of meetings, one with the Recreation Department and one with the Fire Advisory Board, so if you--
I'm sorry, a minute, hold on a second.
Yes.
With me on comments, a little technical review letters, can we reach out to those firms directly, or should we go through?
You should come through staff, and they won't refer you if we--
Okay, thank you very much, sorry.
Got it. So I don't know if you caught that, Michael, but hopefully you can respond to some of the safety concerns where we recommended that you get in contact with the Recreation Department of the town and the Fire Advisory Board?
Yeah, we can do that. I-- let me just kind of get this-- Guess we'll tell you. So, yes, tonight, John Knopf with the Huskies Girls Softball Organization is with us tonight. Probably do a lot better answering some of the concerns regarding safety and setup and breakdown and use than I certainly can, so he's here to ask some questions after. Yes, last time we were here, which was a number of months ago, we came forward, I think it might have been the second time that we were before the board, and one of the larger issues happened to be the fact that we were trying to cram, for lack of another term, three fields into this one spot in the front. So in evaluating and looking at it, you know, two works, okay? So the latest submittal that we have, we do-- we've broken it up into two, just two separate fields, which are shown on the new layout. You know, again, I know there's been a number of issues regarding safety and so forth, so I guess, John, if you want to give an overall of the organization, what you're playing use here is, right now, the girls obviously use the dome. Thus, one of the reasons we haven't been here in a while, because weather hasn't been too conducive to playing outside, but spring is coming, so that's one of the reasons we're back, so.
Hi, my name is John Knopf. I run the Empire State Huskies, a nonprofit girls' softball program, and we practice and train at the facility on 52, the dome. We've been there for about 10 years, and that's what we do all winter, and then in the spring and summer, we try to get fields to train the girls on the outside. So now we're trying to get our own fields on the property so they can train all year round. That's basically it. If you have any questions about it, I can answer them for the softball part.
Yeah, well, I think some of the concerns have to do with backstops and protection of the kids on the side and so forth, and, you know, right now, being my daughter was actually involved with Huskies for a while as a coach.
Mike, move into the lane.
There's things that you can do or things that you can use in order to provide for, and in this case, temporary protection. I don't think there's any intent of trying to install a permanent backstop, but again, I know that John and the organization has a relationship with, they call it BONET, and what they do is they do, and I think I handed that out as one of the previous submissions too, they use these constantly on fields for the purposes of what they do now.
We-- first, we travel when we play. We don't play like around here, we travel all over the country. Our main objective is to put girls in college and play at the collegiate level, which we have done successfully for 19 years. And so there's big sponsors out there, and one of them is BONET, is a big giant net company that helps baseball and softball and youth programs, and they came to me and told me they would get us backstops that you bring in and you train with, and then when you're done, in the winter and stuff, we put them away so they don't get ruined and stuff like that. And again, I'm not trying to make a league or tournaments there. We train, that's what we do. So, and then we travel all over the place and play. There's nowhere for us, for the girls at that level, there's nowhere around here that I could get them to play, to be seen by college coaches, to get to the next level. So that's why in the Northeast, it's not conducive for them to play around here. It's just not, it's not that. So we have to travel. So those nets are made for-- to be put up and taken down for whatever you need. If you're going to do a backstop and you're going to do side nets, they have, they all go. I sent it all in, I think we sent it to everybody, but they could protect you for everything. That's what they do. So that's what we're looking to do there for the two fields, so we can train.
And these things will be taken down. Dale, these things are not, you don't leave them out there, you know?
So that'll prevent them from rotting like the rest of the batting cages nets? I said, so that will, by taking them in every night, I used to take my kids to the batting cages when they first opened, and within a year or two, there was all kinds of holes in that screen, so I'm assuming that by bringing it in every night, that's going to prevent that wear and tear and weathering.
Well, yeah, you leave it out in the sun, it dries out and stuff, so we take them with us, you know, when we travel. We send them down if there's somebody not flying and they're driving, we throw them with them. If not, BONET in particular, who's helping us, they come to those big tournaments, and then you could rent them. Hate that because I already own them, but it's cheaper than putting them on a plane now, so you just, you go there and then you rent the nets that you need, and you set them up wherever you can find a place to do it, and you protect yourself. So they do that like professionally. They go from tournament to tournament to tournament, and for a weekend, it costs me $2.75 for each team that I have to rent a setup. Hopefully, my teams are close, they could all, three teams could use the one setup, but never happens that way for me.
Well, I think we'd like to see a little more detail again on those nets, because frankly, that was a long time ago, so we've forgotten. But our concerns included concerns about balls being potentially hit into the parking lot and hitting cars or people, as well as out onto the highway. And so I think we'd just like to understand how that can be prevented by the setup that you're considering?
Well, with the two fields, I believe there's plenty of room to place them that you're not going to hit the parking lot or the driveway, and definitely not 52 there. So I don't know what you would need to do that, because I think that's for-- A girl hits a softball 200 foot, it's a home run. If she hits it 225, she's playing D1. I've been doing this 19 years. We have, I don't know the exact measurement, but it's, I think we have a buffer after 200 of 100 feet, that's 300. I haven't, and 19 girls, I put 275 kids in to play college, and they're on TV every time. I never had anybody hit a ball 300 feet, never. I haven't had a girl hit 250, that's just me.
But I think the other part of the concern is not just somebody hitting the home run, it's the foul ball or the errant hit. And I think, like we were talking about, from an egress standpoint for safety, there's got to be some kind of formal layout of what you're doing, and we'd have to see it so that we could sensibly look it over and say, okay, this is where you might have some concerns and have to, you know, shore some things up. We, there were some issues, I think, too, with parking at the height, like we didn't really know exactly, because it's not marked parking. I think it's gravel parking lot there, if I remember correctly. So, you know, we'd really have to understand a lot more, you know, at the height of when you would have people there, you know, how are we looking at this from the grand standpoint, like the maximum capacity? Because I think that parking's already been allotted for what's there now, so now we're going to add this into the mix. And I'm not saying that you don't already exist inside the dome, but is there going to be a new attraction that you're going to have these two fields operational? So that being said, I don't think it's just like the home run ball. I think it's those aspects together. I know that the Fire Advisory Board had some concerns about egress for an ambulance.
Based on their present submission, that kind of did away with our-- Because there was one field that was very remote, that we wouldn't have been able to get an ambulance back without some type of roadway. They did away with that field. Both of those fields are up closer to the parking lot and accessible.
More accessible.
So that kind of did away with our concern for that.
So these are some of the checkbox, you know, boxes that need to be checked for us to understand, but I think the biggest thing for us would be an actual rendering outside of just this flat drawing of how this would all lay out. Like, let's say you have a full day of, you know, maximum capacity, how does this look? You know, probably in somewhat of a color rendering, together with this backstop piece that you're talking about and the safety netting. Like, you don't have any dugouts, so again, like I'm saying--
We're-- I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Like I'm saying, like, so you have, you know, how many girls standing on the field? Only one standing at the plate. Somebody wraps a foul ball and all of a sudden, bang, you know, a bystander or one of the young ladies gets struck by a ball.
Well, again, we gave this a while back, but it doesn't, it's not just a dugout, they're 12-foot high nets, higher than any baseball softball field that's in any town. I don't know them all, all the heights, but they're 12-foot nets, and they're 25, 24 foot long.
Okay.
So they go, they would go down off of, let's say, the dug, the backstop, and just go down and protect people.
Okay.
But with that said, our training is our training. So if our training is good in the winter and we have room, we would only go out there if it's nice out. In the summer, I don't think I'd want to be in that dome. I don't know if you've been in there, but I don't think you want to go there when it's hot, it's hotter in there, so we would try to be out there. Would we go in there? Yeah, if it rained, I'd go inside, but I'm not saying it's not a concern, I'm just saying that--
So what you're saying is--
They're only training in one spot normally.
What you're saying is this is a training for practice, you're not going to be having, you know--
Games or tournaments.
Four teams with two, you know, four--
Oh, 100%.
Four teams across there.
We don't play, and I don't want to say we don't, because I have a bunch of different age group teams, but on the weekends, we're, that's what we do. We don't play during the week. It's not, we don't play in leagues, we play tournaments, we travel. So on the weekends, unless a team is off, they'd be practicing, but other than that, we wouldn't have games there or leagues or tournaments or any of that stuff. That's not what it's for. It's a training facility.
So I think in order, just to simplify it, we'd really like to see something, a rendering in color.
Like a three-dimensional rendering, are you saying?
Something that we could kind of identify with from the standpoint of really understanding how this is all going to lay out and, you know, how are we going to say that this is okay for it to happen?
Well, Rich, I mean, we have, obviously, the layout of the fields, okay? We have a 100-foot buffer that we're not allowed to be in. Actually, since this is temporary, maybe we do, but between the 100-foot buffer coming off of 52 and then the shoulder plus a little bit for Field 2, I mean, you're talking about 110, 125 feet. So, I mean, I play at Field 3 next to the basketball courts over in, over in the rep, right, with the girls back in the day. With the girls back in the day. So yeah, they can clip off one, you know, to the back. I would say that first row parked behind the, the basketball is probably 50 feet.
Okay.
If there's a ball that goes astray, that's the car that's getting hit. In fact, when, when people come there, you'll see that that place typically, say, they don't know. But that's empty except for the person who visits and they get whacked. Right. So, but I've never seen a ball go further back than, than that. So we're talking, you know, at least twice the distance here safely away from that. I mean, do you need comparisons like that or how far a girl hits a ball or, I mean, because there's, the only physical alteration that's happening as part of the site is that the fields themselves, the infield, the grass is gonna be removed and some place is gonna be installed. Everything else is temporary measures going up and coming down. I can certainly show locations of where these temporary measures shall be. And we can give you the height and length and, you know, if that, if that's what you're looking for.
I think that's basically what we're trying to understand. And then like, I'm, you know, deferring to fire advisory to say that now this site, the way that you're looking at it is accessible. You have no issue with anything there, right, at this present time? I guess then the other thing was the parking. I know there was a question originally about what is the site, you know, you know, what is the parking there now? What's it approved for? Then we're gonna add a little bit more of this use. Does it gain, does it garner any more traffic now that you're gonna do this? Or it's gonna just go from inside to outside?
The easy way that I think of it, if my team is coming in and going to the dome and now it's nice out and I say, no, we're going over to the field, I don't think anything changes.
Okay.
There, there's two, two teams that are there now inside. There'll be two teams practicing on the field outside. To me, it doesn't change as far as parking, you're saying.
And, and the other thing is how does that even get watched over? If, you know, he says that this is what's gonna happen, and please, I'm not questioning your integrity or anything. But then all of a sudden, we have a full scale, you know, four teams there swinging bats and balls flying and, you know, that's the only, you know, I, I, I'm agreeing with what I'm seeing there flatly, but I don't know. Like I just, there's a lot of variables here as far as I see.
I think at the last meeting we had talked about you guys going to the recreation. Did you ever speak with anyone at recreation or go to the recreation?
We have, and I can certainly do that just to get kickback from them. I'm not particularly sure what feedback you would provide on the fact, would these be available for town use? You know, I, I don't know what other issue that they would have.
Well, you're saying, I think in your most recent submission, that there's about 90 parking spaces?
We, we didn't, yeah, we submitted a separate plan, not on this, but actually we have a total of 95 parking spaces where we are that are gravelled. And I can tell you from experience, you have batting cages, which are very transitory, right? Nobody in the winter. They come back and forth. You have golf, which is also transitory. People are staying there for half an hour, bucket of balls, whatever, and then the dome. So the dome, quite frankly, is, is probably the largest traffic generator here because they do come, and you come in the summer too, to do training and so.
We can't get fields.
The facility is, the facility is tough because it's tight and so forth. So, you know, half of that parking lot is never used. It just isn't. Now, I can run the numbers based upon what's here and so forth. And I'm sure the original site plan is what, what garnered those 95 spots. But there is no way that what's being proposed here is gonna need more than 95 spots. It's just, that's a ton.
And you wouldn't be parking like on that entrance coming in, right? That, that's not allowed.
No. We used to come, East Fishkill, I was also with the East Fishkill Softball League. And they were courteous enough, they would allow us to use their dome for the purposes of having tryouts, right? So we knew where to place the girls and so forth. And, you know, you had a wealth of girls showing up, you know, you did the 8U to 10U at 8 to 9 and then 9 to 10 and 10, you know, and so, so in terms of the amount of physical people you would have there, that would be one of the largest times you would be because you have all the girls in town and even Fishkill and Beekman, they, they can play in the league here. And again, that parking lot, just, you know, from a realistic standpoint, has never been more than half full.
Okay.
That's just the reality of it.
But does adding these two fields now expand your potential of, you know, a tryout, a clinic, a camp? Because now you have the indoor dome and two outdoor fields.
No, you would do either. I, I would be.
He's saying it's just gonna be transient. So whatever, whatever it has inside would just go outside and nothing would change.
But it doesn't have to. He could now use three fields.
That's what I was saying.
As I could do, yeah, no problem.
Right. So there's, there's growth potential now because you have all this extra space to use for tryouts, for a clinic, for a camp, for a scrimmage, whatever it might be. Does the parking accommodate the use of all three of those locations just for softball in addition to golf, mini golf, and the batting cage on a Saturday afternoon?
I've been there 10 years. I've never seen the back part of that parking lot ever filled. That's just me. I'm not gonna hold you to the numbers, but I've never seen, I've seen golf use, I don't know how many spots are over there, but like 25 spots saved to that side. Yeah, I'd probably say half of that maybe, and then they leave and then more come. I'm not counting their business, you know? But, and, and also with us, not everybody stays. Parents don't stay because it's not games. You're not watching Little Mary go run around. You know, they're, they're practicing. So a lot of kids, listen, my eights and nines and tens, did the parents stay? Probably. You know, they, they hang around, whatever. But the older kids, they, they get dropped off and they, and the parents usually leave, come back. Every two hours it switches and that's what usually happens. I would say the busiest time is that two-hour window where Little Mary shows up and Little Susie's leaving. That's probably the busiest 10 minutes of each day. But as far as using all that, I have not seen that in the 10 years I've been doing that.
Right. So I think, I mean, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna enlist our traffic engineer and our consulting planner also to take a look at some of the, the traffic because we do have to park. We have to consider all the different uses on the site to come up with a parking number that is realistic for the site. So I'll have them just double check my calculations.
Just to understand.
And make sure we understand. And if you could just, does your narrative outline all the different things that are happening on the site right now so that we can look to each of the things?
I'd have to check. That would have been with an initial submittal, but if not, we can, we can put that together.
That would be great. And then I can just kind of come up with a parking calculation for each one and make sure that we're, we're parked appropriately.
And I know that it's noted on the plan, but I, I don't know if that mini golf deal, I don't even know if that's functional now. I think it's, we.
As of last year, it was still functional.
Do you have, this winter it was. Can I ask a question? Is there a field near the parking area? Can you show me where the parking area is on that? Show everybody where that is.
Right here.
Yeah. Is there anywhere to go? I guess there really isn't anywhere to go overflow, right?
Where you got it, where you want?
There's no overflow grassed area or anything like that in case there was.
No, when they put that in, the, it was all gravelled. I will tell you that the area here, again, where nobody parks is, it's solid, but it's got weeds all over it because nobody parks in it, so they don't knock them weeds.
And it's not striped. It's just open, right? So it's kinda like, it's kinda like the East Fishkill soccer.
But we could still at least try to understand by square footage, right? And the size of a parking spot, at least what the allowance would be there, right?
Yeah, I can, I can have our traffic engineer give me some numbers for each of the different uses and we can do it and analysis.
So why don't we get the parking tighter? You put a little more information on the board in terms of protection, all that good stuff. I think the way it works out, I think rec meets the first week of the month. So we can resubmit. I can have the meeting with them. I can report on that. Then hopefully we can maybe.
And you'll send us the renderings of the.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna take those and pop them on the plan.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see. I, I'm not really that familiar with them.
Come on over. I'll bring, I'll, I'll let you put one together.
They're completely collapsible, but they're huge.
It goes in a, like a guitar box, like a guitar.
What's the brand of it? I could look it up.
It's still, it's wide.
BowNet.
What's it called?
B O W N E T, BowNet.
A BowNet?
They have, you mentioned soccer. They're big in soccer. So I don't know, but that's where they started, soccer nets, soccer boundaries and soccer protection, I guess, from soccer ball. But now they're big in soccer.
And then he'll run it down.
Okay.
And just to clarify, you're saying you would put them up and take them down every day? Or you would put them up at the beginning of the season and take them down at the end of the season?
No, you'd take them up, take them back down, put them away.
Okay.
I mean, they're temporary. If somebody's, because those BowNets aren't cheap.
No.
So you're not leaving them there because you don't want somebody to take them?
Completely collapsible and you could take it and you could, you could run it off.
If I put it up, I'll use him, he could come two hours later and take it. They're expensive. They're a thousand bucks.
Wow.
So you, you, usually each coach has one. Again, when you travel, if, if you're in your car, you could bring it. If you're not, then you just go to your away tournaments.
Well, I, I think it's important to clarify too, we were only involved, you know, with, you're throwing balls and hitting, practicing, right? With balls every night. Then they went ahead and expanded and then I have long nets. Now they actually have literally these large backstops.
Backstop.
Yeah, so they, it's gotten more.
It's evolved.
Evolved. But yeah, they got all that, all on the website.
Yeah, she actually looked it up and we looked at it, so.
I actually did, we, we played in New York City and we did a whole, like, I don't know what it was called, but for the inner city. And BowNet sponsored it. And with the turf and the nets, you would think you were at like a stadium. Like you were at a real place. Meanwhile, it was just streets in New York. And they do, with all their, but they did softball for the, for the inner city kids. And they had all the nets, all the protection, all the turf out, the fence, what, call them barricades, I think they call them. And they had it all up. Like, whoa. But, so they do have all, everything you, you would need.
For safety, yeah.
They got soccer nets that they actually turn around and you use them for a dugout.
Yeah.
You turn around, sort of protect it, and then they just put a chair there, you know, bench there and you're protected. So they have everything you'd need if you had to go that far, but I wouldn't need dugouts in our, in our plans.
Okay, great. Well, I think you've got a plan, good plan for going forward? Yes. And we'll see you again. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Valley Christian Church.
So I'm gonna do these quick. So Valley Christian Church was in front of you a few months ago. And they want to expand their parking lot, connect their parking lot.
Michael, your plan.
And they're coming back to revise their approved plan because they found an area where it was, there was landscaping and they wanted to add 10 additional parking spaces. And they're going to move the ADA parking spaces closer to the building. And then they also are gonna add some additional landscaping in another location to sort of mitigate for the landscaping that they're getting rid of to add the 10 spaces. So the 10 spaces are gonna be added where, basically where that connection happened between the, it used to be just kind of, it just used to be a driveway connecting. So they're gonna add 10 spaces along that driveway. Okay. And that's just a, if, if you so desire it to be, it wouldn't be just a minor amendment to their approved site plan. It would just amended and adopted by resolution, right?
You mean approve it by motion tonight?
Yeah, well, we have a, I have a resolution.
Yes, it would be by the resolution that was drafted. You're right.
So any questions or comments by board members?
The, I don't think the plan has been signed yet, so that's why we're, it's, it's not, it's a, it was approved but not signed by you. So we're just kind of revising it.
Got it. Okay.
Wait.
Sir.
Are, are we gonna see a revised plan of that?
Do we?
Do you wanna put those spaces just to check, make sure we still have good access and everything?
Sure. And we can make, we can put a condition subject to review of the fire advisory board, okay?
Got it.
And fire commissioner.
I have Joseph DiMarco from Wayland Architecture. And yeah, we will provide an updated site plan showing the extra 10 spaces and everything moved to where it's gonna be proposed.
Okay, great. Okay, if there are no questions or concerns, I do have a resolution. Resolution of amended site plan approval, Valley Christian Church, Valley Church 1072 Route 82. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant received an amended minor site plan approval to expand the existing Valley Christian Church parking lot on October 17th, 2023. Whereas the applicant is proposing additional revisions to the site plan to reduce the size and number of landscaped islands to allow for 10 additional parking spaces. Whereas the applicant is also proposing to relocate the handicap parking spaces closer to the Valley Church office building. And whereas additional landscaping will be added to the perimeter of the parking lot in the area of new work to mitigate for the loss of the landscaping due to the 10 new spaces. And whereas the planning board determined that the proposed action is a minor site plan amendment of the East Fishkill zoning code, waive the requirement for a public hearing. Subject to the following condition, number one, this will be subject to the approval by the fire advisory board. Any other conditions? Not? Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the minor parking amendments as represented on a map entitled for Valley Church 1072 Route 82, Hopeful Junction, New York, prepared by Wayland Architecture and dated October 1st, 2022 and last revised 3/5/24. May I have a second for the resolution?
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Monoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bloodso.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. Pass. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda, Anoteka Wine Bar, 811 Route 82. Change of use from an accountant's office to proposed wine bar.
Yes, this is an existing business owner who owns the wine store at 811 Route 82 Vinovin, which is like the, right next to the, the plaza next to the post office and the store, and the flower store and the accountant. He would like to take over the space that was the accountant's space and put a wine bar in there. He's coming to us because there's no existing site plan for that plaza. And he came and he wanted to go straight to the building department, but because it's a change of use and because there's no existing site plan, we wanted to take a look at the parking over there. There is, that, that particular plaza only really has parking in the front. There's a dirt lot in the back where you might be able to get a couple of spaces, but as you probably know, it's not paved and it's, there's like, I don't even know what you would call it, almost like a stormwater basin back there. And I think it does fill with water. But it, anyway, so he's, he is trying to get a sense of the planning board's opinion about this proposed use because he doesn't wanna spend the money to do a site plan unless he thinks that it's something that the planning board would consider in that location. He realizes that parking is potentially an issue, but he kinda wanted to just get a sense of where the planning board was for that particular use. And I'm just gonna give you a little bit of information about the wine bar. It will be a space that has under 30 seats for patrons. There will be a bar which seats approximately 15 people and tables at seat 14. There'll be a small stage area for live music to include jazz and piano. There'll also be a kitchen built in with a light food menu, mostly tapas style. And it's expected to open from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM or midnight, depending on the day. So it's 6:00 to 6:12. So it's only open in the evening. So it would be off from some of the uses that are in the plaza. And the total parking that's currently available in the plaza is 21 spaces in front. And there, he's saying there's at least 10 more in the rear, but the rear is treacherous.
He's got a drainage issue we'd have to fix.
Yeah.
Long, ongoing drainage problem.
And during the evening when they're open, he's saying none of the other businesses in the plaza are open.
Well, that depends, I guess, if he's not counting the Dunkin' Donuts and the El Guacamole and the barber shop right next door, which is tight parking already in there.
El Guacamole does spill over sometimes. So anyway, so, so I think he just sort of wanted to get a read. We had to bring it before you. I think he needs to do a site plan and show what he's gonna be doing with the parking. But he wanted to get a read before he went ahead and invested to make sure that it was something that the planning board would.
It's a permitted use though, right?
It's a permitted use. I think he's gonna be limited to about 30 with the capacity for the fire or 29, I think is, is the capacity because there's only one ingress, right? So.
And then what's the formula for capacity to car capacity? Like, is there a formula that exists that says if you have a place that can occupy 40 people, you can expect to get 20 cars or?
I think we do it mostly on, we have a restaurant number that we do, which would be 50, for every 50 square feet of patron use, just so you can back out the kitchen areas, you're supposed to have one parking space. So based on that, we had about 600 square feet dedicated to patron seating, which would equate to about 12 spaces that he would need. But I think.
And that's plus staff or does it include? That's for the patrons.
That's the patrons. I would say that that's low because you're not. That's the, that's the patrons. I would say that that's low because you're not including staff in that.
Or the van.
Well, is there a way that you can write the van?
But that's what our, that's what our code requires right now, is one square.
So if they fix the drainage issue, can they park in the back? Or is it more than just a drainage issue?
Isn't there a paint piece that's behind that dirt and grass?
Yeah, there's a paved section. It's, 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 at times it needs to be corrected.
Like behind Dunkin' Donuts, right?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit removed and I'm not quite sure about pedestrian access.
Yeah, I think-
Somebody would have to show on a plan and clean up.
There's no light, like, I don't know how, it's not probably a very safe place in the evening.
Yeah, it's uneven, grass.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, um- It's not clear in this. Does he own the building or is he part of the group that owns the building?
No, he doesn't own the building.
It's completely different.
So this is the issue, like, you know, ultimately, it's, the, the owner of the building should be coming in to revise their site plan. So he's just an applicant tenant. So I think that's probably why he's a little nervous about doing a-
Sure.
A site plan, yeah. That's what I think he's asking.
Is the owner on board with improvements?
The owner wants the wine bars on clear, oh, there, okay.
Can you see it?
Okay.
So there's the owner. So are you on board with doing improvements?
Yes. If there are specific questions, I can speak, I'm just listening.
So I think from the standpoint of the use, that seems to make a lot of sense. That sounds pretty upscale for Hopeville Junction, so that's a plus. But I do agree, we do need to see a site plan and, and understand the parking requirements a little bit better as a part of that site plan process.
Okay. And that's a typical process for anything that comes in. And so you would also probably want to look at just the pedestrian walkways and then lighting.
Lighting.
I think are the two things. And, and maybe refuse container where, I'm not sure, where's your existing refuse container right now for that building?
It's in the rear.
It's in the rear. So-
So, quick question, you're-
Can you go up to the mic if you're going to speak?
Can you go up to the podium, sorry?
And announce yourself.
Just to clarify, you're saying that the front area, which is existing parking, is where the 12-plus spaces would be allocated for this evening time use?
Well, we'd have to look at a site plan to see how all the different spaces are parked, but I think that that is in the applicant's narrative, is that he was thinking it would likely be, because if the parking lot is empty, people are going to park to the closest way they can get into the building, right? So that's just common sense. So that's likely what he was talking about, but I don't know how, because I don't have a plan in front of me, how it's typically used, so I'd have to look at that first.
So the next step is for you or, or your proposed tenant to hire an engineer to create a site plan?
In progress. We have that going on.
Good.
So is the rear required for this proposal to be planned?
I have to see what your, all the uses are and what all the required parking is right now.
Because our engineer wanted a scope of work to define what planning is necessary for his job.
So that there, the site plan requirements, what's required for a site planner and actually in the code, but if you want to give me a call, I can-
Yeah, but as engineer, you could just look in the code based on whatever you intend to put in there and come up with a number. And maybe add a couple on the safe side, you got to look at handicap and he can make his own general assessment and he could bounce it off Michelle just to verify.
We were assuming the front would be designed for this, redesigned for this purpose and the back would not be necessary at the time, but that's why we're here.
And then you'd have to, you'd have to include handicap spaces. And that number is driven by the total number of spaces that's required. So it's either going to be one or two, depending on the number you come up with as being the car.
Are there rules about which businesses are allowed to park in which lots? Because a lot of the patrons to our neighboring plaza of El Guacamole park in our lot when there's empty spaces in the rear.
That's a, that's a trespass issue. It's not something, it's not something this board can necessarily handle, but it's a legit, it sounds like a legitimate trespass issue.
Trespass. We're friendly, you know, neighbors. I just didn't know there's something that-
Well, sometimes what neighboring retail establishments have is they have an, an agreement where, for overflow parking, which is something you may consider, but if, so, I mean, if you're permitting them to park there, it's not a trespass. But if you're not permitting them to park there, then it's trespass.
I think it's old, old friendly agreements from the past because new use and new traffic from these popular restaurants is changing the circulation. So just learning about that as we go. So we're on board.
So the uses would be, the flower shop is, is the flower shop there too?
There is a flower shop there.
So has you got the florist, the liquor store, proposed wine bar. Is that basically it? Or is there anything else?
At the moment, that's correct.
And the post office.
Well, that full build-out, that would, that would be it, at full build-out or?
Yes.
And the post office is on that, is actually on that site. So the post office parking, I guess technically could be-
Parking there, parking.
Could be overflow parking.
Right.
If they're off, if the hours are off. But that's all the stuff that we have to look at when you provide us with the list of uses.
Do you have a timeline for required site plan?
Um, we'd like-